Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our meeting, sorry, our meeting is starting a little late. Welcome to Havford Township Board of Commissioners regularly scheduled work session for the month of March, Monday, March 4th, 2024. It is 7:30 now. Our meeting was called for 7:00. We had a 6:30 public hearing prior to this meeting where we had a public comment on an amendment to chapters 47 and 182 for games of skill and significance tobacco retailers. In order to accommodate all the public comments, we went over our time. 7:30. Mr. Berman, will you call the board?
Commissioner Gondek.
President.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart, he's not here, sorry. Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
I'm sorry, here. And because we can never do this too many times in a day, Chief, will you please?
(Inaudible). The United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, as I indicated, this is our regularly scheduled work session. The first thing that takes place in this work session is I invite any of my colleagues running any of our standing commissioner committees to provide any update on anything newsworthy for the board. Do we have any commissioner committee updates? Hearing, none. The next thing we do at this work session is hear from our police chief, who provides his monthly report on police happenings in the township.
Commissioners, good evening.
Chief.
So, the monthly chief report for February of 2024, 15 criminal arrests, 156 traffic citations, 22 non-traffic citations, 61 written warnings, and 532 parking tickets. Had aggravated assault at 100 Block of Woodbine, it was domestic, related between two brothers. Arrests were made on both brothers. Burglary, unit block of Woodbine Road, a vacant property belonging to a brother of the homeowner was burglarized, copper pipe was taken from the house. Investigation is ongoing. 700 Block of Buckley, a male was arrested after breaking into a neighbor's and four girlfriend's home through the front window, then threatened to assault the resident. He was charged with burglary, assault-related offenses. We had five motor vehicle thefts attempts. 400 Block of Washington Avenue, a Ford was stolen from the residence. Key fob was left in the vehicle. Vehicle was recovered later today in Philadelphia. 200 Block of Lincoln Avenue, Chevrolet was also stolen. Key fob left in the vehicle located in the city of Philadelphia, 28. 400 Block of Marlin, Harford, officers observed a suspicious person. 1200 Block of West Sister Pike, upon investigation, I did report this last month, this is just a follow-up. Only had the pilot, a flight on the upper Darby, and then the Philadelphia. Officers lost the vehicle and the pursuit was called off at 60th Market. The vehicle was stolen and the keys were left in it and the vehicle was recovered later today in Philadelphia. Philadelphia Police arrested a 19-year-old male. 1400 Block of Windsor Park Lane, someone attempted to steal Dodge Durango Hellcat. The dashboard wires exposed and the wires have been cut. Vehicle was not stolen, but attempted. 300 Block of Sagamore, actor's attempted to steal a 2018 Hyundai. Window was broken, initial console ripped out, but the vehicle was not taken. We had 21 thefts from autos. I'll just go down the list of them. 600 Block of Ashurst Road, unit block of Mifflin, unit block of Haddon Drive, catalytic converter was taken. 700 Block of Ardmore, another catalytic converter. 400 Block of Shellboard, contents of a vehicle was strewn about, vehicle unlocked. 200 Block of Marlin Avenue, resident observed a suspect on a security video pulling the door handles of his two vehicles, but they were locked and the actor did not make entry. Four actors fled on foot with an SUV following them. 200 Block of Lincoln Avenue, sometime overnight, an unknown person entered, unlocked the vehicle, took $10 in change. 100 Block of Washington Avenue, three suspects entered a white 2004 Echo Sport. Nothing was taken. 100 Block of, a unit block of Annabella, Ford SUV was parked, the driver had been entered, $10 in cash and credit cards, a PA driver's license, vehicle unlocked. At YMCA, victim's purse was taken from her vehicle while she was inside the facility. 300 Block of Strathmore, catalytic converter was taken from a Honda Pilot. 100 Block of Landau, catalytic converter was taken. 2300 Block of Belmont, witness reports seeing three persons, unknown races and sexes, all dressed in black, taking something from under car. They then got into a silver vehicle, was left on Belmont to Harford Road to determine that the catalytic converter for the victim's jetta was parked in front of their house, was missing. Kenmore Road, catalytic converter. Pembroke Road, catalytic converter. 200 Block of Sagamore, someone heard a loud clang, it was in front of the vehicle, asked by the vehicle, and the soul core driving down the street, the catalytic converter was taken from there also. Catalytic converter taken. 200 Block of Avon Road, 500 Block of Kenmore, another catalytic converter. Hunter's Lane, vehicle was entered. 1000 Block of Austin, catalytic converter. And 2500 Block of Burnmore Avenue, catalytic converter. Now, I'm sure if you see, it's all in the paper of the weekend or last week, the Radnor made arrests of six juveniles entering cars, that they were from bearish parts of Delaware County of Philadelphia. So, they didn't make an arrest. We're working with the Radnor to see if that's connected to any of ours. But, as I say every month, that, you know, these go ways, they come and go. We arrest people, they show up again. The catalytic converters, there's not a whole lot people can do to protect that without spending money to get a shield put on the car. But, as far as the vehicles that are unlocked and key fobs left in the car are a serious problem. These cars are used in other thefts and other crimes, abandoned, and other cars stolen somewhere else. So, implore everyone, please lock your cars. Please take your keys with you and keep everything safe. Take your valuables out of the car also.
Chief, does the last month reflect a spike in catalytic converters?
Yes.
Been a while since you reported one.
I'm sorry?
Been a while since you reported.
Yes, it has. Catalytic converters, we haven't seen one or two, but then it just hit us again. So, and I say this all the time, it's not just us, it goes from town to town to town. And there's always arrests made. There was a big arrest made last year where Philadelphia, somewhere in Montgomery County, made a juvenile arrest. It was a big crime spree that they broke, they made multiple arrests, they got thousands and thousands of dollars of catalytic converters. They're going, but somebody else takes their place.
Chief, you also mentioned parking tickets. We're now about a year, maybe 18 months into our new system?
Correct, yes.
Are we ironing out all the inks in that?
I think the complaints are dropped down minimal. Everybody's gotten used to it. It was a little difficult curve learning because of the apps and things like that. And when we have some senior citizens, still have some issues, but we're very helpful with them and try to navigate through it and help them out in command with a parking ticket. So, we're not the Scrooge, we try to help people. So, we're not the parking authority. You know, our residents, we try to help them.
Well, I have a ticket.
I know, Commissioner. I was reminded that you paid your ticket too.
Yes, I did, on both cars.
Yes, that's correct.
On the same day that you started the protest.
I was waiting for you to bring that up at some point, so.
What I do for. Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
Yeah, Chief, two questions or two topics. One is, you know, at the public hearing that we had before this meeting, one of the topics that had come up was the activities that were occurring in some of the vape shops in the township.
Yes.
And could you just clarify for us in terms of, you know, where does enforcement of the rules fall in terms of what is regulatory, you know, say codes of a state? What is criminal, you know, whether it be local police or CIP? I mean, can you just kind of clarify that a little bit?
So, if police remain aware or see a tobacco product that is sold to a minor or somebody under 21, it's a citation. And that's what we issue, it's a citation up to, I think it's a $300 fine. I'm not sure.
So, it's a summary offense?
Yeah, so it is only a citation, but the difficulty is that I listened to a lot of the testimony, and I think people are rightfully concerned about it, that we can't stand in the vape shops. If we were there, they wouldn't sell it anyway. But I have some thoughts that maybe we could address and help this a little bit till we get this straightened out, but I'll share this with the commissioners privately at another time. But I do have some thoughts, we maybe can help with this a little bit.
Thank you.
Without infringing on the rights of business people, so.
The other question I had is with regards to mail theft, and I still encourage everyone to take their mail to the post office.
Right.
But I have noticed, at least on Darby Road, the postal service has started to replace the mailboxes.
They are.
Are you familiar with them? Are these any safer, or, I mean, what are your thoughts on these new mailboxes?
Well, it's funny, I just read something very recently, that the postal office encourages people not to use mailboxes. Honestly, God, I read it, it came from the postal service, that they encourage you to bring your mail to the post office. And the new mailboxes are more difficult, because if you look inside the way they're designed, that it's more difficult. But it's, a problem has, I hate to say this, but it has, I won't say it went away, but it has dropped off dramatically because of, I guess, with the changing locks, getting keys back that were stolen or sold, and also with the new design of the new mailboxes. But I always encourage people to take things to the post office, in the inside drop boxes, save these places, you can take it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else to the chief?
Thanks, Chief.
For our consideration next week, a number of things will happen. We will be accepting the appointment of an entry-level police officer. Our finance department will be asking us to settle a tax assessment appeal with a stipulation. We will be presented with grant award recommendations under our newest business revitalization and modernization matching grant program, and that requires board action, right? Ordinance involving scadiums leased, ordinance involving traffic. We will be taking up next week, and we can, I'm going to race through the agenda, we can back to this if folks want to talk about it, but we obviously will be taking up for our first reading next week, our amendments to chapters 47 and 182 of the township code related to games of skill and significant tobacco retailers. We do know that this ordinance already has been slightly changed from what was shared with us earlier, and that we have added a 1,000-foot buffer. But with regard to our township-owned parks and recreation areas. Mr. Solicitor, are there other things that we may be revising as a consequence of tonight's hearing? Is that something you need to address with us?
Nothing substantive. There were some cleanups to the language, a sort of duplication of language to simplify it. There was one typo that was made, that was corrected, but that would be the only substantial change that would, I believe, would warrant it being re-advertized.
So, look, again, we'll come back to that. I know, I'm sure my colleague says something to say about those issues. We have a number of resolutions to consider next week. Budget transfer, preliminary and final land development on Havford Road, ARPA funds relating to a parking study, ARPA funds relating to park and recreation expenses, a resolution relating to an EPA assessment. We will be awarding contracts for a parking study that will be paid for with ARPA funds. We will also be considering the HVAC system commissioning professional services contract to Havford Township Free Libraries renovation and expansion project, also the prime contractor, and change orders associated with their current work. Scadium, we will be amending the original contract award for the chiller replacement. That work is currently scheduled for mid-May. Public Works Department will be purchasing recycling cans. Parks and Rec will be purchasing playground amenities and equipment. The long-awaited appointment of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board on behalf of the sixth board will likely take place, yeah. We will, once again, hold our heads in our hands and consider what to do about the vacant property review committee. We have proclamations for an Eagle Scout and also for Women's History Month. So, let's go, let's go back to the vape ordinance, I can call it that, give the shorthand. Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on ordinance P.5?
Yes, I would like to say one thing that I saw tonight, is we did not see one vape shop owner here to defend themselves.
Well.
They didn't come to the hearing.
Let's, yeah. If it demonstrates anything, it is their sense of self-preservation, so I think this might not have been.
Yeah, but no. But I thought that that was a thing to point, point it, or to point out, is we didn't get one note from them, one anything. I just wanted to point that out, that it just proves a point here, so.
I have a question.
Yeah, it's a good point. Yes.
So, someone raised a question about how the license, like, if there's a vape shop that's here now, like on Darby Road, that wouldn't have been allowed under the new ordinance, and that vape shop moves out, is it required that grandfather's over that it will always become, be a vape shop, or is there anything we can do to potentially make it so when they leave, another one doesn't go in in its place?
I don't believe there's anything we could do in this ordinance to take care of that situation. I mean, it really is dependent on the facts of how that happens. I mean, but if it was to just, a different sign comes up one day and is under a different owner, that use would have not been abandoned, it would be continued, a continuation of a non-conforming use. Certainly, if it, at some point in time, was to switch over to, let's say, become a convenience store, they can't then switch back to being a tobacco store. But if there is no abandonment of that use and it continues on, from our, we wouldn't be able to regulate that through an ordinance. Now, whether or not there is something that would be required to be done through the Commonwealth level, I'm not sure, but from a zoning perspective, we can't, we wouldn't be able to put language in to get rid of that pre-existing nonconformity, unfortunately.
So, another question I have is, so, and this is just kind of trying to understand how it all works. So, there's a vape shop there now, I understand they can't be held to these criteria that we're putting in the ordinance. If another vape shop comes in, then do you have to say, you are required, you know, maybe you call yourself a convenience store, but you are actually a vape shop? Like, does it, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I hesitate to provide too much, because I know that the township would like to do what they can behind the scenes to get the result that they'd like. If someone is now operating as a convenience store, which there are some convenience stores out there that really are vape shops, if they change hands and certainly become it to be a vape shop, shop, then I think that we, as a township, could attempt to take some action against them to say, no, that is a change of use from a convenience store. They have a use and occupancy permit that says they're a convenience store, but the use they'd be applying for, if they have to get a new use and occupancy permit, would be for the significant tobacco retailer. So, in that situation, there may be some way to regulate it. If it's a situation where they're clearly a vape shop, and we know based upon the quantity that it is a vape shop, I think it'd be hard to argue that that is a change of use.
So, since we don't define convenience stores, though, right now?
We do, right now.
We do have a definition for a convenience store?
Correct. One of the reasons this ordinance was put into place was because there was a very weak definition of convenience store that essentially said, as long as you have some food products there, then you're a convenience store, or a mix of food products. It didn't really talk about the quality or quantity, I should say. So, people were saying, hey, I've got some chips, got some ice cream, I have some gum, and I've got a lot of cigarettes, on a convenience store. And this ordinance is aimed at saying, you can't do that anymore.
Okay.
And they wouldn't be able to do that anymore. So, I think the impetus of this ordinance was to stop that from happening again in the future based upon our weak definition of convenience store. So, in addition to adding the significant tobacco retailer use, we also have provided the flip side of that to a convenience store that says if it's, you know, the 20% or less of the merchandise has to be tobacco. So, if they still have, you can still have a store that has some tobacco, think of your basic wall wall, that would still be a convenience store. But if you flip it where it's mostly, then it's going to be a tobacco store.
If you're a convenience store right now, under our weak definition, and you move out and a new convenience store moves in, but it's the same store, are they, do they have to adhere to the new definition, which is stricter? Or can they essentially keep operating the same way?
I would, I would think that they, if they are a convenience store now, they're either going to be a convenience store or a tobacco store in the future. And if they're actually a tobacco store, that would be a change in use, assuming they need to get a new use permit to operate, which isn't always the case. Depends on, again, if there's any absentee, if it's downtime in that building where it's unoccupied, or if work needed to be done to have it be occupiable. In that situation, if they had to get a new permit, it would be a different use, and I think the township could take action in that.
Okay, so some, if it was, like, one that's in existence now, if they needed to switch the use, and it was, it happens to be within 1,000 feet of one of these institutional properties, then they essentially could not put in another smoke shop?
I think the township would try to take the position to say, we're not going to give you that use permit.
Right.
Because the use you're presenting is a new use that you weren't before, and you can't have that use because of these regulations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Again, whether or not that would be successful, really depends on a lot of facts, but I think it's a valid position to take.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, kind of to piggyback off of Commissioner Cavender's original kind of statement. I believe that the person who spoke at the public hearing about what, you know, occurs where, they specifically cited Philadelphia and tobacco, when they leave, that somebody can't necessarily take over their right to sell. I believe, and I may be incorrect, but I believe they were kind of speaking about something different than zoning. In other words, in Philadelphia, I believe you actually have to have a license to sell tobacco. So, there are two distinct issues on what you can do via zoning, and then what you are licensed to do. Now, my understanding is in our township, we don't, we don't have a tobacco sales license that really, if somebody wants to come in and sell tobacco, it's just purely whether or not that business fits within the zoning classification. Is that accurate?
That's my understanding, that what Philadelphia has is its own separate licensing system that Philadelphia is allowed to have. We.
That was kind of my next question is, do we, I know that the state grants Philadelphia the right to do a lot of things the rest of the state can't do. I just wasn't sure whether, you know, having a tobacco sales permit is something that is permitted outside of the city?
I would, I would think not.
Okay.
And by that, I mean, it wouldn't be permitted, I'm assuming, under the local tax, tax-enabling laws, to just tax anything. Again, Philadelphia's had the opportunity to do that under their government system, whether it be fast food, sugar.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the rest of municipalities, either of the first-class code or the home rule, likely wouldn't be able to have that ability.
Now, with regards to some of the other questions that were raised during the public hearing, one of them, you know, had to do with the 20% of merchandise. And I guess my question to you is, what, how is that calculated at the current point? Is it dollar value of tobacco-related merchandise as compared to all merchandise? Or is there some other formula to calculate that 20%?
It's calculated on floor area or display area. Both were included, I think, really, as to taking into consideration vertical display of merchandise and horizontal display of merchandise, and it could be one or the other. And to take a step back, we need to have an ordinance that can be enforced. And in order for it to be enforced, we need to be able to walk into a store to determine whether or not there's a violation. We do not have the power to compel businesses to provide us with their receipts and their sales records to establish that they are not in violation of our ordinance. So, although it'd be great to be able to be in a position to document what someone's sales are, to make that also an option, we're not able to do that in order to enforce this ordinance. However, I think code enforcement would be able to walk in, take a look around, and take some pictures, even if they wanted, around the area, and to see if, you know, it's clearly the floor area or the display area is majority tobacco products. And when we talk about tobacco products, again, we're talking about, you know, any of the vaping products, again, the Delta 8, the Kraton, the ingestible CBD, all of the paraphernalia that may come along with it, whether it's ashtrays, pipes, hookahs, all of that area of display would be then able to be put before district justices and say, look, they're in violation. And I would wager that it's usually not going to be a close line of, you know, is this 21% or is this, you know, 19%? It's usually significantly one or the other. But also, in addition to just the floor area and display area, the ordinance says that if you hold yourself out as a smoke store, you market that way, you have signage up that way, if you promote yourself as a tobacco store, smoke shop, vape shop, cigar shop, then that's what you are, regardless of trying to get around it with that inventory. And then again, any hookah bar, regardless if they're actually selling tobacco products or vape products, it's a different use, but it's, again, classified as significant tobacco retailer. So, it's floor area and display area, again, floor area, more of a horizontal, vertically, you know, stacking racks high in order to, again, come to a total determination of merchandise.
Any other questions or comments?
More thing, so you can walk into the store, like, they can be fined like five, five times, and they can't be shut, shut down?
For?
They get fined for, or for, or for selling, selling, selling to kids and stuff? What point do they get, like, is there something that they will have to shut, shut down for, or get into some form of trouble?
So, I think as far as selling to minors, I'd have to defer to the chief, Viola, as to what the repercussions would be on that. From a zoning point of view, and what this ordinance would do would be, if you are operating illegally because you opened yourself or transitioned into a tobacco store and you're not allowed to be there, we would be able to issue a notice of violation if they, if we're successful and that notice, they don't appeal, or we go to the zoning hearing board and they find that they are operating illegally, they're then subject to daily violations. And based upon our code, we're able to take relief, or to seek relief in order to force them to shut down, on top of seeking those daily violations if we wanted to go that route. But then again, that's all for zoning. As far as the individual illegally selling to minors, I don't have the information on.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we have continual violations, we cite the business owner multiple times for violations, could not, not be a violation of our zoning ordinance or their ordinance to operate? And could you not take action from administrative action on that?
I think if, I would think if we were to take action on that, we'd take it from the nuisance ordinance that we have, where we've actually had a lot of, not related to tobacco, but we've had some illegally operating nightclubs in District Pass where we've, where we've, where you've taken action to cite under the nuisance ordinance based upon the police reports and the well-documented instances of police activity there to say that they continue to violate our codes, and therefore, we're having that heavy hammer of trying to shut you down. So, again, we could do it that way, but again, that's using our codes, sort of the civil penalties as far as the criminal penalties go, that would be in addition to the actual sales.
I also assume there are rising levels of fines or punitive action based upon how many offenses and how quickly they take place.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments about this ordinance? Any questions or comments from any of my colleagues about any of the items on our agenda this evening?
A quick question, the entry-level police officer, is that replacing a retiree, or is that the new police officer that was, the addition to the force?
We have a.
We have a sergeant retiring on March the 6th, and he will be the replacement for that sergeant, the officer.
Thank you.
We have an up-to-date list and everything we'll be using, is that right?
Yes, we do have a current list, and we have given a sources exam, and we have interviews scheduled next week with Soul Service for promotion, possible promotion coming up.
Perfect. Thank you, chief. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, unless anybody has anything else to offer or would like to discuss, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Adjourned.